May 2nd, 2022, and this is a regular meeting of the Lake County Board of Commissioners. Pretty long agenda today. But we'll go ahead and get started. So if you'll all silence your phones, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay, so we will need to make one adjustment to the agenda today. So we will on our new business number three, and request from George Shears for help of a new civil administration. We'll take that off of the agenda and put it on our next review.
Yeah.
And then, other than that, I will approve the agenda with that change.
We approved the agenda with item number.
All right, I will discuss any further discussion? Are there all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Community information items, if anything, should be there?
I think we're really entering into an active phase on the community justice center, you know, buying, working firm handle. And not quite under contract, but looking to work in the construction companies with patients. So what there, more information on the website, I will give you page. Again, that's probably been being talked about for two to five, twenty years, and it's finally moving.
Oh, all right, thank you. I think for me, just wanting to make everyone aware that there is a transportation survey listed on our website, and it should be advertised on the paper as well. If you go to the website and scan the QR code, it'll take you to the survey. Questions that our consulting firm has come up with to gather some preliminary data and then bring forward to us a feasibility plan in the end, at the end of June. So if everyone can participate in that survey, we would really appreciate your feedback. It'll help give us the best comprehensive results possible for that feasibility study. So that's all I've got today. Any commission or clarifications? None for me either. Alright, so we'll move into public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Citizens wishing to see done issues that are not listed on the agenda are required or requested, excuse me, to send a message in the chat section or raise your hand. In the participation section of Zoom or in person, the chair will call on the public in order that their hands have been raised. Comment is limited to three minutes, not including board questions, if if the public comment warrants any discussion over their actions. Action if required will then be assigned to county staff for matters on the agenda. Public input will be heard prior to a vote being taken on the matter if applicable. So with that, we'll go with anybody that has any public comment. I see from the EDC. So Nancy, if you'd like to start us off, you are welcome to. Oh, give me just a second here. Okay, Nancy, you, can you just say something to make sure we hear you?
Yeah, hi, guys. Can you hear me?
Can hear you. Okay, so you are good to start.
Great, thank you, guys. I'm sorry, I'm multitasking today, but I forgot to mention at the last meeting that Main Street, in partnership with the EDC and hopefully you guys as well, again this year for Community Cleanup Day, scheduled for June 11th. Basically, the same timeframe that we did last year. It's about a week before the flowers go out on the avenue. So Emily from C4 will probably be reaching out to her team and your team in regards to roll-offs and another items that she usually handles. And that's it, guys.
Awesome. Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
I'll be sure to put that on our calendar.
Great.
Request just sent to Sam. Excuse me, and then we will handle those.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Anybody else on the Zoom meeting have any public comments that they would like to speak at this, excuse me? Is there anybody in the room that has any public comment on items not listed on the agenda today?
Sarah, Kayla, I do. This is Michael.
Sure, sure.
And it kind of has to go with, along with the EDC's thing. We are going to start the voucher program at the landfill on the 21st of May.
Okay.
So, bye. Again, just like always.
Okay, perfect. Just with taking loads up to the gate, or is that for the yellow bags as well, Michael?
Um, I'm not sure that we did it with the yellow bag, but basically for a yard of trash at the gate.
Okay.
Alright.
Cool. Thank you so much, Michael. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the room that has any public comment at this point?
I'm sure so. May 1st. The rest of this year.
Yeah. Anybody else with any public comment? No? Okay. So I'm seeing that we will move on to new business. First on our new business agenda, we have a presentation of the Colorado State Forest Service 2021 report on the health of Colorado forests. So with that, I believe we hand it over to JT from the Colorado State Forest Service. JT, I'm just gonna let you take it away.
Cool. Thank you so much. First off, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. It wasn't working this morning, so I'm glad it got fixed. Thank you all for having me, and I was gonna see if I do have a presentation, kind of a slideshow, if I could bring that up on the screen.
Yeah, I think you should have the ability to share your screen.
It still says I'm disabled from screen sharing.
Okay, me is going to help us out with that. Give us just one second to be able to give you permission. Sorry, he's working on it, JT.
Oh, no problem. This happens almost every time I've done one, so.
No worries.
There we go. All right. Cool. So can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, we'll start. So first off, thank you for having me today. I am JT Shaver. I am the forester in Salida. I am worked for the Colorado State Forest Service, and I cover both Chafé and Lake County. And today, I'm gonna give a, kind of a quick overview, report of the health of Colorado's forests. So every year, our state entomologist with other entomologists fly Colorado and parts of Wyoming as well in kind of a small Cessna plane. And what they're doing is documenting pretty much all the forest health concerns through this little window of an airplane to give us kind of a snapshot of what is going on in Colorado. What are the trends? You know, is anything new popping up? So today, I'm gonna first kind of give a brief overview of the Colorado State Forest Service and what we're doing. Kind of a few highlight projects, and then I will get into kind of more zoomed into Lake County and what are those forest health concerns that you have and what we're seeing. And you'll see 2021 written on here a lot because this is what they flew last year. So we really won't know what's going on this year until next year. So we're always kind of one year back of seeing the trends and what is going on with the bugs and insects that we have going on. So just a little brief overview of the Colorado State Forest Service. We are actually under Colorado State University. We have about 103 staff and 41 student, non-student employees. We have 17 field offices around the area. And where we kind of fall under is the southwest area. So that includes Alamosa, Salida, Gunnison, and Durango and Montrose. And you know, a lot of times, people do wonder what we do. So kind of different services we offer. We have leadership resourcing, guidance, and forest management. Lot of what we deal with is wildfire risk reduction and community wildfire protection planning, which we're actually working with Lake County right now on revamping their CWPP and looking really excited about what's going on with the new CWPP we're working on, and then also dealing with wood utilization, marketing, and then a lot of outreach and education for the public. So one thing I wanted to bring up is we do have interactive maps and information on fire and beetle interaction. And if you can see on the top there, there is a link, and I can also email this to you. And I really would highly recommend to get on there because the cool thing with it, you can zoom all around Colorado and all the different polygon colors you see there is different insects and diseases from, you know, spruce beetle, pine beetle, and you can zoom around and click on it and kind of have an idea of what's going around, not just in Lake County, but kind of through, all throughout Colorado. So I would highly recommend to utilize that. It's also a great way for partners to kind of gain local information on the forest and the health of Colorado. And then just the picture to the right, I like throwing up there, the shows the two areas that were flown in 2020 and 2021. So you can see in the last two years, kind of the coverage they have done, like I was talking about, those Cessna planes. No, excuse me. And one thing I do bring up is this isn't exact science in the way of how big and how much is affected per acres, because they're looking at like 50 miles per second when they're flying and trying to track all this data going on. Sorry about that, my phone. So what I would say is, take it as a grain of salt, and it's mostly for us to see trends and kind of what activity is going on. And it helps us when we're in the field, actually go and ground truth what's going on. And as you can see from Lake County, I'll be the first one to say, compared to other counties, you're looking pretty darn good in the way of insect and disease. You can see just to the south in Chafé with all the spruce beetle going on compared to a lot of other counties. For whatever reason, Lake County has missed the bullet many times on mountain pine beetle and different insects and disease. So overall, I'll say this, that Lake County is looking pretty darn healthy. So as we were talking about at the beginning, you know, just highlighting some of the critical work we're doing. You know, and the big thing is we're able to work with partners across the state. That's a huge portion of all this insect and disease stuff, is we can't do it by ourselves. So all the partners that we have in Lake County, Chafé County, and throughout Colorado is really what's made this work. And you know, a few projects we wanted to highlight is, you know, one really interesting one is, we just completed the state's largest timber sale through the Good Neighbor Program, 3,500 acres in the Alpine Plateau between Gunnison and Montrose. And what Good Neighbor is, is pretty much, we work with our federal partners to be able to admin. And we actually administer a timber sale on federal land. And I bring that up because it is a good avenue down the road with how much federal land is in Lake County, to have this as a program to look at down the road. Because, you know, with all the lodge pool we have, and mountain pine beetle hasn't made it really built up much in Leadville in the way of acres hit, but not meaning that it isn't gonna come one day. So really keeping that in the back of our mind that, you know, with fire and insect and disease, Lake County and Leadville and the whole area has really not been impacted too bad, but it's not more of a matter of if, but when it's gonna occur. Few more, you know, talking about this, our forest health report, and if you haven't had a chance to look at it yet, the big kind of driving factor of it this year is the persistent drought has stressed our state forests. And we don't, you know, trees are not happy in Colorado right now. We have a lot of old mature forests. We've had a lot of lack of fire. And, you know, two things are gonna get those trees. Either fire is gonna replace them, or we're gonna have an insect and disease move in and take them out because we have old mature forest. And, you know, a lot of people talk with, you know, oh, we have really good rainfall in the summertime, and you know, that's really gonna help the drought. But as we know, you get a couple weeks of good monsoon, and we're right back to dry again. And one thing I always like to tell landowners and anyone I'm talking to when talking about forest health, especially with trees and their uptake of water, is most trees get their about 70% uptake of their water a year by snowpack. So snowpack is huge for us. And really, how, you know, well those trees are gonna be able to defend against insect and disease in the, you know, in the next years of how much snowpack and how much uptake of water they get. So same thing, talk about, you know, forest health really is a trickle-down event because, you know, there is a huge correlation between quality of water and the health of our forest and our watershed. So sick trees can also affect our watershed and how much it affects really, it's a trickle-down from the top down. And, you know, 80% of Colorado residents rely on forested watersheds for clean drinking water. So just more information to keep in mind that, you know, today I'm talking about forest health, but it's broader than that. We're talking watershed levels. We're talking wildfire. And all these have a correlation, and they all kind of fall back to what is the health of our forest. So this is just a quick graph, kind of in map of the normal snowpack in Colorado. You know, one interesting thing was, last May was the 11th wettest month on record for Colorado. But the tough thing is, it fell primarily in the eastern half of the state. In drought conditions, returned to the front range. So it's getting back to that, hey, you know, great, great that we had some monsoon season, and we had a lot of good moisture, but it doesn't take much to get back to the drought that we have. And you could see in the Arkansas, not the best. You know, and the other thing, talking on the dead trees, everyone's driven over Monarch and seen how much spruce beetle activity has been going on in the past, you know, 10 years. But, you know, with the Decker fire burning, we're seeing the impact of post-fire. And, you know, up in the Decker, we had a bunch of spruce. We had a bunch of down spruce trees killed by spruce beetle, and we saw the impacts of that. And a lot of times, we always think of, what does the fire do when it's burning? But a lot of the times, we don't realize what happens with the post-fire. And a great example of that was, you know, with the mudslides and flooding that affected Glenwood Canyon last year. If anyone was trying to drive I-70 last summer, it was a real pain, and they had it, you know, shut down for weeks on end. So that's one thing, you know, we have a lot of spruce-killed forests. Those fires that are burning in there are burning super hot. And, you know, it's terrible to lose the homes, but a lot of times, we're seeing even more of a costly effect of those post-fire problems in the way of erosion control mudslides. So it's just something we like to keep in mind. Same thing with the Marshall Fire. I actually, my aunt and uncle's house was very close to that fire that occurred. And, you know, sometimes, we always think of wildfires occurring in, you know, very heavily forested acres and, you know, big spruce trees and ponderosa, but the Marshall Fire showed, we were in the end of December and lost many homes. And we can see the impact. It was a story I tell that's not, well, not funny, but ironic, is my uncle was evacuated for the Cameron, or the Cameron Peak Fire. And he was actually up at his cabin that he was evacuated from, because he was evacuated in Lewisville for the Marshall Fire. So it's just changing the ways that we have to look at fire, and it's a whole new norm of pretty much fire season is year-round in Colorado. Another, everyone has seen the spruce beetle remains. I mean, every, I think we're up to 1.8 million acres now affected in Colorado for spruce beetle. And right now, we are seeing it run along the Continental Divide. And we'll kind of see if it makes its way into the Maroon Bells. One good thing with Lake County is it's mostly lodge pool pine, so it's kind of stopped once it's hit the border, and more than likely is probably gonna move more west to the Maroon Bells. So one thing I wanted to talk about is, you know, with everything going on and how much spruce beetle activity we're seeing in the state of Colorado, and that we have old mature forests that, you know, state and federal leaders are making critical investments in Colorado's forest and wildfire mitigation. 88 million was, 88 million dollars was allocated for wildfire and post-fire watershed recovery during the 2021 Colorado legislative session, and those investments are hitting the ground. You know, a lot of what these funds can be used for, community wildfire protection plans, wildfire risk resources and training, outreach and education, support for the forest products industry, and, you know, the thing that's very interesting is, the past couple of years, I've seen a lot more funding coming down, and the money is out there. From federal to state leaders, they're seeing that there is a huge problem. They're trying to get all the money they can out there for us to be able to utilize and, you know, really make an impact, not just on fire, but forest health, and then looking more at the watershed scale and going larger with projects to make a larger impact. So the short with this one is, there's a lot of funding coming out, and I think working with, you know, Sarah, we've worked a lot with, and with Lake County revamping their CWPP, that's the first step of really being able to allocate a lot of funding and having priority areas to treat. So I think we're moving in the right direction. And it's at a very good time because more and more money is getting shoveled out, and they're wanting to see areas cut and good forest management done. So just a few pictures. As I talked about, you know, not much Douglas fir beetle, pine beetle. I actually looked at the aerial surveying numbers like I have on this next slide. And Lake County had zero acres of mountain pine beetle. And I say that as it's a good thing now, but with how much lodge pool pine that is in Lake County. It's more of something we just need to keep in mind, and hopefully, if we start seeing trends of mountain pine beetle building, we're able to hit that and kind of nip it in the butt. So as I say that, it's great, we're not seeing any of that, but it's more of those trees are gonna get older and older, and more than likely, mountain pine beetle is gonna move into Leadville and the Lake County area. We just need to be ready for it and understand that it's great right now, but in five years, it can be a completely different story. So just a few highlights. I went through and looked at the data. Spruce beetle, they only saw about 90 acres in Lake County. And if you want to compare that to the state of Colorado since 97, we're up to 1.8 million acres affected. We did have some western spruce budworm in Lake County in 2021. Mostly, the severe activity was around Sawmill Gulch. 320 acres, but like I said, not an alarming thing to me. Western spruce budworm is kind of probably the most widespread disease going on right now. And it's a defoliator, so it's not like mountain pine beetle where they move in and kill the tree in a year. They're just defoliating the tree and kind of knocking the year's growth back each year. So something to keep in mind, but it's not a huge worrisome for me. Probably the most acres I saw was western balsam bark beetle, which really affects subalpine fir. There again, not a huge worry with 420 acres. If you look at any subalpine fir in Colorado, none of them look super great. They have multiple things affecting them. So like I said, good to keep in mind and to monitor, but isn't a huge concern of mine. And then, of course, Aspen issues kind of in the southern portion of the county. But looking at Lake County compared to so many other counties, it is a very healthy, you know, where really, there's not a huge concern. Like I said, the biggest concern for me is just keeping an eye on and really seeing the trends of mountain pine beetle. And, you know, once that's population starts building, being able to hopefully get ahead of it, because as we've seen, once it builds in a lodge pool stand like you did up in Grand County, Grand Lake area. I think right now, for mountain pine beetles since 97, we're up to 3.89 million acres. So like I said, we'll just keep monitoring, but as of right now, nothing really has been affecting in the way of mountain pine beetle. You know, this is kind of a cool picture. This was northwest of Fort Collins of a thinning that they did that was through the Fort Collins Conservation District. So it's nice to show when project on private land or federal land, when we put in a fuels mitigation project that it actually helped. This was taken after the Cameron Peak Fire, kind of made a push down this hill, and because of the good fuel break that was put in, they were able to save some good structures and water sources as well. So just wanted to throw that in, and this was paid through our one grant program that we have called the Fur Worm Grant. And you know, they are starting to dish even more money out for fur worm, and I think there's a lot of communities, and with the CWPP getting updated in Lake County, I feel that fur worm will be a great grant for a lot of these communities go for. Last year, we had 42 projects funded with 12 of them located in areas of fewer economic resources. And what they're looking at doing this year is they've allocated another 8 million to the fur worm program annually. So we're getting 8 million annually to distribute throughout the state of Colorado. So I mostly bring that up just because this is a great grant program, and with all the great work that Lake County is doing in the CWPP, and they will have priority areas. And when you have that under your CWPP, that really helps on these grant applications to kind of rank higher than other areas because it's very prioritized. Where's your biggest bang for your buck treatment? So just wanted to bring that up to the commissioners and everyone listening, that this would be a great avenue to bring more funding for fuels reduction and forest health type projects in Lake County. Overall, that's what I got, kind of a lot of information. Like I said, I would really recommend going to that website on our website, CSFS, to look at that story map, to be able to cruise over and look at kind of all the forest health concerns. And you can even look back at past history to see trends and where the beetles are moving. So yeah, with that, any questions? I'm open for anything.
This is question, Jeffy, thanks for highlighting the work we've done with by Sarah on updating the wildfire protection plan. Maybe it'd be great, I don't need to answer it now, but really just maybe show we could schedule like a follow-up on how to access that program you mentioned, and the other resources, whether you, you know, if you don't have a staff person, you know, leading, grant writing, or managing, you know, implementing them right, and it'd be great to do this, that they get a sense of what, you know, what internal capacity, whether it's us or other partners, on that wildfire protection plan, that needs to be in place, that be accessing that state and federal, you know, support that's out there.
Yeah, no, and there's already been great work. You know, the co-swap grant that I was talking about, that the legislature brought down there. You know, they're applying for some to do on CMC ground. There's other ones we're looking at applying. So already, Lake County has made huge strides into applying for those, but, you know, the thing with like the fur worm and all that, you know, when we did the Chafé County one, it's great to have a timeline of knowing deadlines, what our applications do, because it is that thing where, you know, everyone goes, oh, let's do a project. And then you're like, oh, we need an application due you know, everyone goes, oh, let's do a project and then you're like, oh, we need an application due by next Tuesday and we haven't even started it. So we'll definitely make sure to kind of have someone in charge or at least a timeline. So you know, everyone knows who can apply, when's the deadline, you know, what is the criteria, having all that information really helps. Cause they come fast and you don't want to miss out on the money that's coming down.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And I guess the second question is I'd love to have a conversation about like whether we're, whether there's enough turning material coming off to think about like any kind of wood products, you know, industry length up, you know, here and maybe coordinating with JP.
Oh, absolutely. And that's kind of the golden question here in Colorado where we don't have the big trees and you know, we have to get very, we have to have a unique or a niche market and you know, we've even talked on biochar and getting an example of someone coming to do more biochar. So it's not always thinking of your, you know, firewood or your saw logs. We have to get a little more um, unique on the niche markets that we're looking at, but that will be hopefully another aspect of the CWPP is talking a little bit about that wood utilization and what are alternative methods we can go down to utilize small diameter timber that, you know, really we'd have to pay to get someone to take off, but how can we utilize that and bring it back into the community? So would love to have more conversations on that.
I don't think I have any other questions. My question was just um similar to Jess about making sure that we have some follow-up on the grant programs that are available for you guys. Um, and make sure that we can direct staff appropriately to explore those grant options with our CWPP. So thank you so much for um your presentation JT and we really appreciate it. And the, the website is uh car CSFS dot CSU.
Yeah, what'll I can do? Uh, I'll send an email from the, the group email I've been talking to you on and I'll just send you the link and if you click on that, it'll take you right to the story map. Um, but it's a very useful tool, so it's kind of fun to mess around with anyway.
Yeah, absolutely. Is there any way for us to publish that on our website? Like, is it okay for us to?
Oh, yeah, I just, I think, yeah, I mean, it's open to the public. So if you wanted to a link to it so people could explore and um, it's pretty user friendly. So yeah, feel free to do that.
Okay, um, I'll just have Tim follow up with me on getting that uh up on the website. So thanks so much. Do you have anything?
No, thank you JT.
Yeah, thank you all.
Yeah, we appreciate your time today. Okay, so um, we'll move into number two. Two is resolution twenty-two dash zero nine proclaiming May as wildfire preparedness month in Lake County. Um, Tim, do you have any information you'd like to give us on this?
I'm sure this, excuse me, this resolution has been passed by several of our neighboring counties and their boards of county commissioners. Or a concentrated effort to let our communities know um about risks of wildfire danger, but then also um resources that are available to them. So once the resolution is passed, then this week we can start working more on pushing out more information on revised wildfire protection plan, resources available to homeowners um and all those kinds of things.
Okay, right. Um, I don't think I have any questions. We just have one cycle on the resolution and then we'll put it on legal paper.
Okay.
So that it'll all fit on one set. Um, but you, I can read it into the record if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay. All right, uh Board of County Commissioners, County of Lake City, Colorado, Resolution Twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash zero nine. The resolution proclaiming May is wildfire preparedness month in Lake County. Whereas twenty of Colorado's largest wildfires have occurred within the last twenty years. Four out of the five largest fires in state history have occurred within the last three years, including the most destructive fire in state history just five months ago. And whereas warmer temperatures, drought and continued development in wildland urban interface have made wildfire mitigation a top priority for Lake County. And whereas wildfire preparedness month is focused on encouraging residents to learn about wildfire safety and to take steps to reduce wildfire risk in and around their homes. And whereas these actions will lead to unified and fire adapted communities throughout Lake County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lake, State of Colorado. That the Board of County Commissioners hereby declares May twenty twenty-two as wildfire preparedness month in Lake County. That the board hereby finds, determines and declares that this resolution is necessary for the safety, welfare and resilience of the residents of Lake County. The state in the county of Lake, Colorado. Moved, read and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lake, of the State of Colorado and its regular meeting held the second day of May twenty twenty-two.
I move that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-two dash nine. Uh, uh, resolution proclaiming May as wildfire preparedness month.
Right, I'll second any further discussion.
Uh, just in the typo, it's my last name.
Sounds good and we'll just print it on legal, legal paper. We'll print it out on legal paper and then we'll be good. Um, just thank you, Tim, for being um, cognizant of this and aware of what's happening in the communities around us um so that we can participate um, in some of these broader educational opportunities for our community. Um, so seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, number three, we have removed from the agenda, so we're on to new number three, which is contract between Lake County Public Health and Department of Public Health Environment. For core immunization services. Um, Colleen with our Department of Public Health is on the line with us. So Colleen, if you would like to um, just talk through this contract for immunization services, I think this is just um our uh renewal of the immunization services contract. Sorry, it took me a minute to think of the words.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you so much, Kayla. So yes, this is um a longstanding contract that we have to renew every year to continue to provide immunization services in Lake County. It is money from the Colorado Department of Public Health Environment, so CDPE. Um, this particular uh amount is twenty thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars.
I do not have any questions on this contract myself. Jeff, do you have any questions for Colleen on?
No, none for me.
All right, wonderful. Um, seeing no more entertaining motion.
Uh, I move that we approve the contract between Lake City Public Health uh and CDPE, but then Colorado Department of Public Health Environment uh for core immunization services.
All right, I will second. Any further discussion?
None.
All right.
Yeah, so I just want the record to note that um, kind of submit to
Okay, thank you so much. Um, all right, um, so seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, thank you very much, Colleen. Um, next we have another contract for core public health services from the Department of Public Health and Environment. Colleen, I don't know if you'd like to give us just a quick rundown on the core services agreements?
Yeah, absolutely. So we are obligated for core public health services and the state provides kind of a um a bucket of money that we can pull from. It is unencumbered for the most part. In the past, it's been about fifty thousand, but there was legislation that went through recognizing that public health overall is underfunded. And so now it is almost doubled yearly in order to support some of those things that don't necessarily um fall under a certain category like immunizations, for example. So with that being said, this helps support all of our other pieces that we do in the SCU doll and the amount for this year is one hundred ten thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars.
All right. Thanks so much, Colleen. I don't have any questions on this um contract.
None for me.
Okay. So.
I move that we uh accept the contract between Lake City Public Health and Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment for core public health services.
All right, I was second. Any further discussion?
None for me.
All right.
Commissioner Marzola, and I just wanted to note for record that coming to some of the review that.
Thank you very much. All right, seeing no issues and no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Number six, the contract between Lake County Coroner's Office and P your duty for on-call software. Um, since Alexander's not with us today, Tim, did you want to just give us a brief rundown?
Sure. This is a contract for the coroner's office for um for paid or services. So between the coroner and his deputies, they can be in contact. Um, or whatever issues arise when they're on the case and getting a hold of each other.
Okay.
And so, sorry, eighteen hundred.
Okay. Uh, Chris, have you reviewed this?
Yes. In fact, it's unseen major issues.
Okay.
Kind of redundant with our other emergency services, but we can work on that.
Okay. Any further questions?
None for me.
All right. Um, so I'll make a motion that we approve the contract between the Lake County Coroner's Office and the P your duty for on-call software.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Mm-hmm.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number seven, well, it's actually number six, sorry. Um, contract between Lake County Public Works and Kimley Horn for civil engineering and drainage work for County Road eleven. Um, bridge replacement project. Um, Michael Irwin, did you want to talk briefly on um the County Road eleven bridge replacement project? Is it, it's just one bridge, I'm assuming, and culvert that needs to be replaced?
Yeah, so that is the um river crossing at the Lakeport Creek.
Aye.
That bridge, I don't know when it was put in, but it's really not a bridge. It's about two culverts that I appear to be old boiler housings. So it's been there for a while. But it's falling apart, so we need to get it changed. And we got some grant money from um, through the NRD stuff that we've done the other bridges with and um so over the next five years, we'll be looking at replacing five more bridges or replacing culverts with bridges around the county. So this is the first one and it's downstream from everything else. So um it's just in it, this one is just for engineering on that bridge only so that we can get it moving and get it the bridge ordered.
Okay. All right, um, I don't have any questions on civil engineering work. We do have a current engagement with Kimley Horn and this is in addition to the scope of services that the county already works um with Kimley Horn on. So this is just in addition to that retainer that we have with them. Yes, Chris?
The one thing I was going to note on this one, they've referenced the wrong master agreement in here. They reference the old one. Uh, October, October two thousand fourteen. On last March, it should be March first, twenty twenty-one. A correct reference on that contract. Okay, Michael, did you knew that?
No, I didn't. I didn't catch that.
So uh, Chris just said that they referenced in the master agreement um or they referenced in the contract an old master agreement from October of twenty fourteen. And it should be um the new master agreement that was adopted in March of twenty-one, right, Chris?
Yeah, March first.
March first twenty-one.
Okay.
But that doesn't need to be changed in the master agreement and then if you'll get, get that over to Chris. Our final legal review, I think that would be um appropriate. So Chris will connect with you to make sure that that date is changed.
That sounds good.
Okay. Um, so I will make a motion that we approve the contract between Lake County Public Works and Kimley Horn for civil engineering and drainage for the county for work for County Road eleven bridge replacement project pending final legal review.
I'll second.
Um, any further discussion?
I have one question for Michael. I don't know if you, um, just as I'm reading the agreement. Um, I was curious, do they do like that, that like flow surveying or I mangled the word, but especially if we're seeing or or if they're trying to analyze like we have like lower snowpikes up here, but then like fast runoff in the spring. Like, are they looking at like long-term changes?
Yeah, so basically the bridges that we've already placed look at a five hundred year flood. Um, it used to be one hundred year floods, but now with everything that's been happening and climate change, they're looking at five hundred year floods. To make sure that covered all of that water flow.
Yeah. Okay, that's, that's good to know that that has changed. So it's, yeah, it won't be under capacity.
Yeah, no, they're, they're um, that's one of their jobs is to make sure that it will handle a five hundred year flow.
Cool.
Okay.
That was it for me.
Wonderful. Um, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, um, next we have the contract between Lake County Public Works and Kumar and Associates for geotechnical engineering study for Lake County, County Road eleven and Lake Fork Creek Crossing. So Michael, this is the same, it's just the geotechnical work um to go along with the civil engineering work, correct?
Yeah, it's just a, it's a subcontract of that to be able to do the um geotech for foundations on the bridge.
Okay. I don't have any questions on this either. Jeff, did you have any questions? Chris, you?
I would just say I haven't had the opportunity to do this. So I would just ask that you could find any follow-up.
Okay. Um, Michael, did you hear that? That um, the recommendation from the county attorney is to um, have this agreement uh depending on final legal review. So feel like you would connect with Chris after a vote takes place. If you were, okay. All right, I don't have any further questions. Um, go ahead.
Uh, I'll move that we approve the contract between the County Public Works and Kumar and Associates for geotechnical engineering study for Lake County Road eleven and Lake Fork Creek Crossing, ending final review.
All right, I'm second that. Um, so Michael, if you'll just connect with Chris on both those.
Uh, will do.
All right, um, no further discussion?
I'll move.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Um, coming up number nine, well, sorry, this is number eight, sorry. Um, contract between Lake County Human Services and Colorado Works. Janine, if you would like to give us just a brief rundown on Colorado Works, um, the, the program and who we're contracting with um for this program, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, um, I wanted to make sure, first of all, that you guys got all of the documents. Um, these, it's actually not a contract, sorry. It's, these are the Colorado Works policies um that were required to uh update every three years. And um, the state sends us the standard templates. And then we uh have to go in and modify them for Lake County and make decisions um in some of the areas and then they need to be signed off by the commissioners. Um, do you have seven policies?
Um, I'm looking through our file right now.
I use words.
Okay, yes, Cindy has them.
Okay.
So she have all seven, Janine.
Okay, perfect, perfect, great, great. Um, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have on them. Again, these are templates that are provided by the state and every, every years we have to um update them and modify them and put in our county information. Um, and then have to be signed off on. So any questions that you all have?
Do you not have any? Uh, Janine, is domestic violence policy the same? It looks like it references the same, it has the same reference number, is that correct?
Same reference number as what?
Um, the same sta- uh statute reference number on the top.
Um, as other?
It just looks like it's the same, it's duplicative and it's the same policy twice. Are we supposed to have two of the domestic violence policy?
Um. Let's see, that's a good question.
I have disaster assistance, diversion, hardship extension, other assistance.
Systems, workforce requirements.
Um, I think I'm missing workforce requirements.
Oh, okay. So you have two of the domestic violence and not the workforce requirement one?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, I could send it to you or we could, um, I could review it, talk about it, uh, could do both?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think that, um, I think that's okay. These are, these are just policies that need to be reviewed for state programs.
Your, yeah, and they need to get approved and recorded. Let me, um, do you want me to send to you?
Um.
This information?
Yeah, if you could, that would be great. And then we have one, two, three, four. Can we? They're all listed as separate agenda items. Chris, can we combine them all into one, because they're all human services policies, or should we do them all individually as this is on each of that?
I think you can probably include them all and just them all, approve them all together.
Okay, okay, perfect. Um, so Janine, uh, can you just give us a quick rundown of the, the policies?
Yes.
What policies govern and terms of human services, um, programs?
Yeah, sure. And I did just resend all of them to you, and I think the one you're needing is the last one that's in that attachment. Um, so yeah, let me open them one at a time here. Um, the first one is our policy related to domestic violence. And it is, um, it just specifies that we, um, do um, some special considerations um, when working. And just to remind every folks, remind everyone that Colorado Works is the same thing as TANF. Um, and there is a case management requirement for all of these um, programs. So that's why there is a, um, and, and there's case management, and there's all kinds of work requirements that's um, involved in Colorado Works. And so these are um, how we handle these particular cases, uh, for example. So um, this relates to how we define it, um, what happens with the case, what the TANF case manager does. And all um, TANF cases are required to participate in um, child support enforcement unless um, they meet what's called a good cause. And domestic violence um, is an example of what constitutes good cause. And um, they are given a waiver um, for that. And so this policy outlines how we do that process, what um, training requirements are involved for our staff, and um, sort of what that looks like, so it's consistent across counties. Um, the next one is disaster assistance, and this outlines what assistance we can provide in um, the case of a disaster. And this is actually helpful because it came into play during um, COVID early on. It um, states what is considered a disaster, at what level the declaration needs to be made, and what is available to folks. Um, and in this case, um, we have a twelve-hundred-dollar um, payment uh, available, and it does say though, depending on budget, what's available for funding. Um, and how that shows up, and um, what those funds can be used for, and um, again, we activated that during the pandemic, so that was very helpful. Um, the next one is diversion, and diversion is um, sort of a um, a policy which um, is essentially, um, we can waive some of the requirements um, for Colorado Works and TANF and create just a short-term um, fund for, for a family. If it's just sort of like a one-time payment would help get them over a hump and get them onto the next thing, or get, uh, get them onto the next um, take care of a class, it would help them get onto a job. Um, so we can do what's called a diversion. And then it doesn't mean that they have to be involved in all of the case management and the processing, and it's sort of a shortened process. Um, but important to have policies around that. Um, in the next one, sorry, I started with a domestic violence, but there's uh, one that was before that, and it just talks about um, the purpose of Colorado Works, TANF programming. What it's divi- what it's designed for, who qualifies for it, how we make those determinations. Um, what's required of the um, participant and um, what's sort of involved in those cases, including cases that um, are minor-only cases, so that like a child-only case, um, which may mean that there's a um, it, the funding essentially goes to the kiddo in the household. Um, and that's uh, fairly common in folks where maybe parents are undocumented, but the child is um, at least a legal permanent resident, and then they're eligible. Um, so the funding technically goes to the child um, via the adults in the household. Hardship extension is, um, there's a time limit to the Colorado Works TANF um, program of sixty months. And um, the hardship extension comes into play when um, meeting all this criteria. Uh, the caseworker and the supervisor agree that there should be an extension of um, benefits past that sixty-month time period. So that's uh, outlined there. Um, other assistance and supportive services outlines how folks who are um, either eligible for TANF can receive a one-time um, or once-a-year allotment for supportive services and what it can go towards. Um, and examples of what those support payments can be. And um, the, the dollar amount that goes with that. And then lastly is um, the workforce requirements. Um, and this outlines what's required of um, folks who are engaged in the program um, to continue to receive benefits. And the workforce requirement for this um, comes about um, between the case manager and the client, where they go over what sort of the work goals are. Remembering that TANF and Colorado Works is a um, it's a sort of a back-to-work benefit program. So the idea is to get the individual on a track um, back into employment. And this is um, sort of the case plan that they outlined to get that to happen. And um, how they develop the plan for that, and how they measure the work activities. And then also going into the good cause where somebody may be exempt from some of these work requirements. Um, and exactly what that looks like and, and how to do it. Um, so we have to follow a lot of rules and policies in what we do. Um, so that's one, I think that's um, oh, and also the, the worker requirement one goes into sanctions that can happen if somebody isn't following their work requirement or falsely reporting um, their work activity. Any questions on all of that?
If it was like, I, I, my setting, these are, I mean, these aren't like negotiable, right? The policies we need to acknowledge.
Yeah. Yeah, they really aren't negotiable. Um, and the state wants us, I mean, you can, you can understand why they established these, because they want consistency across the board. Um, there also are, are reference when we have situations come up, and it's just sort of our operating procedure. So, yeah, the, the things that we do have leeway on are sort of outlined here in gray in some of them. Um, things like the dollar amount for the um, disaster assistance. Uh, we decided to do twelve-hundred dollars per household, but again, that's conditional upon funding availability. Um, some of the things in there that we're able to make some decisions on, but um, some things are sort of standard template too. So the things that we were able to make decisions on, our staff weighed in, uh, and managers weighed in, and sort of, this is, you know, their recommendation on it, so.
I don't feel like I have any additional questions. So we can, we can go ahead and put these on in the motion, just list them individually, Chris, Chris, so.
Right.
Sure.
Uh, I moved that we adopt the policies uh, for Lake County Human Services. And there are seven policies. They are for county-approved settings, for disaster assistance, for diversion assistance, uh, for domestic violence, for hardship extension, uh, for workforce requirements, and for other assistance and supportive service.
Janine, oh, and, and can we add it on there? The workforce requirements and employment outcomes. Okay, perfect, sorry.
You might just know, you might just know that it's for Colorado Works.
Okay.
Yeah, this is. Okay. Very good. Almost like that. Um, thank you for bringing us all of these policies, Janine. I do appreciate it. Um, so I will get these all signed and sent over to Cindy's. Under, under policy number, it has XXX C W P.
Oh, I don't know if we were supposed to have put one in there.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay, so I'll get those sent over to Cindy to get printed out, and then I'll sign them for to be recorded.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that this is not something that you need to have final pending legal review as these come down from the state.
Yeah.
For Colorado Works, okay. Any further discussion? All right, thank you, Janine, so much for taking time for the points. And take.
Yeah. Thanks.
Seeing no further discussion, all those are favored?
I.
I. Okay. On our list is grant application to the FAA for the Lego Airport Taxi Lane Project. Gosh, is not with us. Um, trying to get down to a, to a dollar amount. Do you have the, oh.
Yeah.
Six hundred thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, so um, this is part of the runway projects that we had done a couple of years ago. It's the second part of the runway project. Um, the applicant's share is thirty-three thousand dollars, the state share is thirty-three thousand dollars, the federal share is six hundred thousand dollars. Um, for the taxiway to be paved at the airport, um, to be complimentary of the runway. Uh, we Um, so this is just formal approval of the grant document that has been filled out um, by our airports now. Have any questions on it, Mr. Shinkor?
Yeah, I didn't either. Yeah, just, just the application.
And then uh, Kimley Horn takes care of the financial reporting of the grant um, for us and takes care of the engineering and all right, I don't have any other questions, so I will uh, make a motion that we approve the grant application to the FAA for the Lego Airport Taxi Lane Project.
I'll put them.
Any further discussion?
Mm-hmm.
No? All right, seeing then all those in favor?
I.
I. Okay, then number thirteen, resolution twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. Has your adoption of supplemental budget. Um, so I just have, I have to mention, Crystal, if you'd like to talk us through this.
Sure.
Sure, you are more than welcome to.
I'm excited.
We're having a conference. I was gonna.
Well. It's fine.
I'll, I'll send her.
And so we determined to do a supplemental budget uh, earlier than we typically would um, in a year um, for circumstances that were, you know, uh, smaller controls. Um, just to get line items up to what was agreed upon in the work sessions for adoption. Before final adoption, we saw. Um, so some of the changes that we made were, and the plans that were impacted uh, are the general fund, um, Rosenbridge Fund, Land Hill Fund, the lodging tax fund, and the insurance fund. Um, the general fund, our original budgeted amount for expenditures was twelve million uh, fourteen thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. It is increased um, with the new budget for the supplemental to sixteen thousand, two hundred fifty-six, sixteen million, two hundred fifty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-one. Um, again, these are adjustments uh, that were approved but not included or the original budget.
Um, I provide third-hand assistance.
Second control. Um, some of these items include the addition of a housing department um, and expenditures and staffing for that apartment. Um, the uh, agreement with um, CSU on the CSU extension um, as well as agreement with Florida Central Conservation.
Conservancy.
Conservancy. Yeah, and these are just my notes here, so. As well as, uh, we made some additions um, to the coroner's budget to include the deputies um, as well as vehicle. Uh, there was a typo in maintenance budget, so that was corrected. Um, some additions um, are, are items that didn't make the, the budget uh, for, for library as well as um, recreation. Um, and then we had uh, those discussions that I had missed out on while I was out for learning and development, core staffing. Agreement for the amount of dollars that we, you know, we transferred to the, right? Uh, so those are the items that impacted the, the new budget. Fun. Um, Rosenbridge budget, the original budget was two million, four hundred and thirty thousand, forty-four dollars in expenditures. The million, five hundred eleven thousand, eight ninety-nine. Um, this includes uh, items not included for uh, the fleet lift uh, for the vehicles and tools associated for the landfill fund went from nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-six to one million, one hundred forty-nine thousand, five ninety-five. Uh, this is for the purchase of the the, the landfill. Um, the lodging tax fund went from three hundred thirty-one thousand to uh, three hundred thirty-one thousand, seventeen dollars to four hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-three. Um, this was for an addition of um, the manager position that they implemented. And then lastly, is the insurance fund, uh, with original budget was two million, seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four. The new budget is two million, two hundred and nine thousand, seven forty-three. This is to two uh, cap insurance one of the six that we've devised. So I do have the, the resolution.
Do you have an updated fund balance sheet of what?
I do, yeah. I do have that. And also I did much. Some of the other impacts for the general fund was staff and additions that. Agreed upon but did not make it enough for. My staff and assistant assistants office. And I didn't adjust like the.
Did we put property tax into the money for sure from Washington? Okay, it's just not reflected on the balance worksheet.
I can leave you that.
Yeah.
Updates on there, because I thought we had, maybe it just didn't. I can go back through my notes.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that we, yeah, so it looks like there's a typo in there with that. I'm sure forty six dollars.
It is not a typo, and I don't know what to do about it, it's for Laura.
No, that's cool, I think you can just look and make sure before we record this that, to mind closure has the. Sure, the property tax allocation in there. And that's all the questions that I have, I don't know.
That.
Okay, that's cool. Um, is the CDS money not included, not included in the revenue?
I don't, I don't think you have to apply for it.
Okay, through the USDA?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so then we'll do this again once we get that one, okay, I just want to make sure that I'm. No, it's not. No, I just, no, I I just want to make sure that we. Accaparate link capture that commercially directed spending and really just kind of earmark. That award, that formerly known as a word for us.
Yeah, I did. It's in the federal budget that it goes to the federal agency, we have actually applied to that.
To the USDA, yeah. Okay, great.
So I will check on that and then I'll just, you know, update out. To the commissioners, just to have a look and then.
Okay, I don't have any additional questions.
I have one question though, because I put five two dash eight, should it be zero eight five two?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I don't have any additional questions, thank you for this one. Do you want me to read the whole resolution to the record?
The the numbers will change, do you want to do it now and then I'll just, I mean, it's not going to be. Be like one.
Which one? Oh, yes, but it won't affect the actual.
No, no expenditures from.
Nothing listed on the resolution. And then we can, we can make. We're going to prove it pending the final fund balance worksheet. And have it signed up on after you have a chance. So this is resolution twenty two dash zero eight, a resolution approving the transfer of previously appropriated. To new funds or between agencies of Lake County, Colorado and adopting a supplemental budget and making supplemental and revised appropriations. For Lake County, Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty two and ending on the last day of December twenty twenty two. Whereas the annual budget for Lake County, Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning January first twenty twenty two and ending December thirty first twenty twenty two. Has previously been approved by the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County and whereas it is necessary to make certain adjustments in county's twenty twenty two fiscal year budget. By one, transferring previously appropriated funds of the county between various funds and spending agencies of the county. And two, adopting a supplemental budget for the county and making supplemental and revised appropriations. Order to reflect unanticipated revenues and expenditures which have occurred during the twenty twenty two budget. And whereas section twenty nine dash one dash zero eight five CRS, which is part of the local government budget law Colorado provides. That changes to an adopted budget or appropriation may be made in accordance with provisions of section twenty nine dash one dash one zero nine CRS. And whereas section twenty nine dash one dash one zero nine CRS requires that any transfer supplemental appropriation or revised appropriation be made. By accordance or resolution following notice in a public hearing held in accordance with your requirements of section twenty nine dash one dash one oh six CRS. And whereas at public hearing on the proposed changes to the package twenty twenty two fiscal year budget was held on the second. Twenty twenty two following notice published in the Herald Democrat on April twenty sixth twenty twenty two. By with the requirements of section twenty nine dash one dash one zero six CRS. And whereas interested electors are hereby given an opportunity to file any objections to the proposed changes to the county's twenty. Budget in accordance with the law. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Colorado have considered any such objections and finds and determines. Twenty twenty two fiscal year budget here and after step forth and necessary. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Colorado. Section one, the county's twenty twenty two fiscal year budget as previously adapted is hereby supplemented and amended to reflect the following additions and provisions. General fund, the source of the expense, the fund balance, the original budget. Is twelve million fourteen thousand four hundred sixty dollars, the new budget is sixteen million two hundred sixty six thousand six hundred. Adjustment for items approved but not included in the additional budget. And our finance director has a way to support those individual items. Room Bridge Fund, the source of the expenses, the fund balance, the original budget is two million four hundred thirty thousand dollars. Four hundred thirty and forty four dollars, new budget is two million five hundred eleven eight hundred ninety nine dollars. Which is an adjustment for items that are approved but not included in the original budget. The landfill fund, the source of the expenses, the fund balance, the original budget is nine hundred thirty six thousand one hundred and forty six dollars. The new budget is one million one hundred forty nine thousand five hundred ninety five dollars. Adjustment for items that were approved but not included in the budget. The lodging tax fund, the source of the expenses, the fund balance, the original budget is three hundred thirty one thousand seventeen dollars. The budget is four hundred seventy one thousand three hundred thirty three dollars for the employment of tourism manager. The insurance fund, the amount is two million seventy seven thousand nine hundred thirty four dollars. New budget is two million two hundred seventy nine thousand seven hundred forty three dollars for our cap insurance. Section two, there is hereby appropriated from the revenue step forth above to the several county funds and spending agencies described above the amounts of forth above. Section three, the supplementary budget described is hereby approved and adopted and shall be signed by the chair of the Board of County Commissioners and be a part of the public record of the county. Section four, pursuant to twenty nine dash one dash one zero nine CRS, a certified copy of this resolution shall file with the Division of Local Affairs in the Department of Local Affairs of State, Colorado. Section five, pursuant to section twenty nine dash one dash one zero eight five CRS, the resolution shall be effective upon adoption. Done with the second day of May twenty twenty two. I don't have any questions on this.
So I'm just looking through the online item under the revenues, I do have. Property tax within the mine closure fund, so there's something broken. And we feel a lot of that's all about.
Okay, perfect. Well, I mean, it's not. So thank you, Crystal, I feel just double check out for. And just as a as a point of order, have you received, as outlined in the in the resolution according to CRS. Any public comments regarding the adoption of the supplemental budget? Tim or Crystal or Steph or Jeff or Cindy? Chris, have you? Okay. All right, I don't have any further questions. All right, so I will make a motion that we approve resolution twenty two dash zero eight. A resolution approving the transfer of previously appropriated monies between funds or. Between spending spending agencies of Lake County, Colorado and adopting a supplemental budget. Pending the final revision of the fund balance worksheet.
A second.
Any further discussion? All right, none of me either, all those in favor?
I.
I. Right, thank you so much, Crystal and Tim, for your work, I appreciate it. All right, Cindy, I have not had an opportunity, that's the end of our new business. Agenda, I have not had an opportunity to look at minutes. But eighteen, so I can come to the table. February twenty third, March seventh, March eighteenth, April seventh, April fourteenth and April eighteenth. To our next regular scheduled meetings, you did send that some of that this morning, so I'll have to go with the memo and be ready.
These ones I have not, these ones were already sent.
Those ones, okay.
Yeah, I just sent my new one this morning.
Okay.
For the last couple meetings, I know these ones have already been sent.
Okay, so we'll just review those, make sure that we didn't miss any in between and then. Come those ready for our next meeting, our next one. Thank you, Cindy, I appreciate it. And I will make a motion that we approve bills and payroll for paid period ending April twenty second twenty twenty two. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
I.
I, all right, that's the end of our agenda, Christine, thinking to add Tim.
Sorry. DHS is now back in person, so five days a week.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Okay, and with that, we will adjourn today at two twenty four P M.